Good evening and welcome to the Elk Grove Township Board Meeting dated November 24th, 2025. Would the audience please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Dukes.
Present.
Trustee LuJai.
Present.
Trustee Stanyek.
Here.
Trustee Waincoop.
Present.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Here.
Assessor's here?
Oh, I'm sorry, Assessor Kears.
And are you here?
I am here too.
Fantastic.
Maybe.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is a very special night for us for many different reasons. First item on the agenda is public comments. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. If there's an item on the agenda that, under new business, that you'd like to speak about, you'll have an opportunity at that time. First up is the consent agenda. Does everyone have an opportunity to review the payroll bills, including the town fund, the general assistance, and the road department and sewer?
Yes.
Does anyone have any comments or someone want to make a motion to approve?
Trustee LuJai makes a motion to approve the authorization for payroll and bills for the town fund, general assistance, road department, and sewer.
Trustee Duke, second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee LuJai.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek.
Aye.
Trustee Waincoop.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye.
And now I wanted to talk a little bit about the department reports. The township has been very busy this past month, so right now we're going to be talking about the, all the services that were provided in the month of October. I'm pleased to report that as of year-to-date, at the end of October, the total rides for seniors and those that are disabled is 5,703 compared to last year at the same time of 5,145. Also, the passports that were processed in the month of October of 2025 was 90 versus October of 2024 was 50. So we're seeing significant increases in the administrative services. When it comes to the Department of Social Services, general assistance recipients, and this is year-to-date, there were 127 recipients versus the previous year, same time of 105. And the state benefit program assistance, including senior health insurance program and state benefit applications, went from 111 last year at the same time to 150. They completed a low-income home energy assistance appointment onsite at two senior housing facilities, participated in resource fairs at new senior housing facility in Mount Prospect, and attended the General Assistance Training Institute hosted by the Supervisors' Division in Rockford. When we look at the food pantry, this year we have served, year-to-date, 7,518 families versus last year's 6,328. And we couldn't do it without our volunteers. This year, our volunteers have put in a total of almost 6,400 hours versus last year's 3,800 hours. That is significant. We could not operate this food pantry without our volunteers. They are busy all the time, and they're always smiling. They're just here to help, and so that's fantastic. They participated in the GCFD meeting regarding SNAP changes, and then also launched an Amazon Wish List to help increase donations at the end of October to prepare for SNAP delays, as well as stock the shelves for the upcoming holidays. Every week, I sign letters to those that have made monetary donations and also have made donations of food and non-perishables, whether it's toilet paper, paper towels. I've signed more letters in the past month than the previous four months combined. It is significant that this community has rallied around and made sure that everyone has food on their plate, bring it home, and making sure that their families are well-fed. So thank you to the Elk Grove Township community. You guys rallied big time, and I'm grateful on behalf of the entire board. The Department of Youth Services, you know, when I look at the report, they've made strides in every single category, most notably in school District 59. This year, they've served 1,500 students versus last year, 860. All their programs are up. They collaborated with the Elk Grove Village Police Social Worker and Advocate Kristin Eby to share valuable insights on career paths, discuss the importance of boundaries, and practicing empathy with our Girls Empowerment Program. They also worked with Lincoln Middle School Student Services Team in District 57 to gather data on student needs. The Youth Services Team has since created a curriculum focused on inclusivity and race-based bullying. I will tell you that the Youth Services has been doing such an incredible job. I recently received an email that I actually, I'll have to share that with the board, from a parent whose daughter's in the, in the youth services programs. And this mother said that her daughter lights up, doesn't want to do anything, but when it comes to coming to the town, when it comes to going to the township for this program, she lights up, and all she can do is speak about it, and it's made her a stronger person for that. And so, thank you to the Youth Services Department for your continued efforts. Adult and Family Counseling, this year they have served 1,870 people versus last year of 1,042. Again, significant increase in all departments, so thank you to the staff, thank you to the directors. You guys work as a team. I see it all the time, but I'm grateful for everything that you do. Also in the township this month, there were flu vaccinations. There was a second clinic, a second of two free flu vaccination clinics in the meeting hall, and there were lots of shots given out. The Thanksgiving donation drive this year, our goal for the Thanksgiving drive was to raise $14,000. And thanks to the generous support of our community, we surpassed that goal and we raised $17,000. I can tell you that we're not only grateful for the support, we really needed it because turkey prices increased significantly, and we really needed those extra dollars, so thank you. The monetary drive is essential as the funds used are to purchase the items needed to ensure every food pantry client receives a complete Thanksgiving meal. Earlier this month, I attended, along with seven township employees, the TOY Conference, which is the Townships of Illinois, and it was held in Springfield. And two of the township departments from Elk Grove Township were honored with statewide awards recognizing their hard work and innovation. First up was Most Innovative Township Program, the Food Pantry Lockers. As presented at the ITOC, our Food Pantry Lockers received the Most Innovative Township Program Award. This recognition highlights the creativity, accessibility, and community impact of the locker system, providing residents with flexible, dignified access to food resources outside of regular food pantry hours. This project has been a true example of a forward-thinking service that meets the needs of our community. Cory, would you please tell us a little bit about your award and accepting it on behalf of the township?
Yes, so the township was presented this award, or was nominated and won this award at TOY, which is the Township Officials of Illinois. This was provided by the ITAG, which is Illinois Township Association of General Assistance Case Workers. So it's basically all of the other social services departments nominated us. There were four different categories, and we did win Most Innovative Program. So we're really excited about this. Townships from across the state are reaching out and asking questions, and we were really excited to present our idea and show what it's doing, and it was really exciting. So thank you.
Congratulations, Cory. Congratulations, Cory, and the entire department. Next up, we won another award, and that was for the Youth Organization Award, Youth Service Bicycle Safety and Challenge Courses. Our Youth Services Department was honored with the Youth Organization Award for the incredible work being done through the Bicycle Safety Course and Challenge Course. These programs promote safety, build confidence, and provide meaningful hands-on experience for young people in our community. Their creativity and commitment to continue a lasting difference for our local youth. And I would ask Director of Youth Services Renee Dorn to join us. Tell us a little bit about the award.
So this is the award we received at the 118th Annual Township of Illinois Conference in Springfield, and the honor recognizes two of our programs, the Challenge Course, the Challenge Program, and the Bike Safety Program. The award reflects ongoing commitment to our team, who is with us tonight, Jen Han and Melissa Hoffman, and part of our commitment to the community, the partners, and the incredible youth that we serve. So I can say, in the many years that I've been with the township, this is the first time ever that we've been recognized for this, so it is truly an honor.
And on November 15th, we had our Thanksgiving Basket Drive. It's an annual event that's held, and it's a drive-through event for food pantry clients to receive their Thanksgiving basket. These baskets include, at all, stuffing, green beans, mushroom soup, gravy mixes, potatoes, corn, fried onions, butter, milk, eggs, pumpkin pie filling and crusts, and more to make a traditional Thanksgiving meal. Clients were also offered a choice between a whole turkey or a turkey breast. The event ran smoothly and efficiently throughout the whole day with the help of the staff and 41 volunteers. The Elk Grove Village Police Department was also onsite to help guide traffic through, along Landmire. We received many compliments in person and through social media from residents on how well-run, how well the event was run. Before I tell you the number of turkeys that were given away, I can tell you that in the first 30 minutes, that 175 families were provided their basket. In 30 minutes, 175, because they had two lanes of traffic coming around the building and going through the warehouse. It was fantastic. It was amazing to see, and people were so incredibly surprised in how efficient everybody was to make sure that everyone received their Thanksgiving meal. So I want to thank the staff, but I want to say that to date, we've given out 663 Thanksgiving baskets, and the number's still rising, and we will give away all of our baskets until Thanksgiving. The number of baskets given out will be, in total, will be announced at the December board meeting. Thank you to the staff, thank you to the volunteers, 41 volunteers. I mean, that's incredible. But thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your planning, because without the planning, it would not have gone as successfully as it did. So thank you very much. And now at this time, we have a present, we have presentations of our veterans. Oh, you know what? I need to do one thing. Need to make sure that we accept all the department reports. Can I get a motion?
Trustee Waincoop, I move to accept the department reports from Administrative Services, Social Services, Food Pantry, Youth Services, Dalton Family Counseling.
Trustee LuJai, second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Trustee Waincoop.
Aye.
Trustee LuJai.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye.
And now our approval of minutes. On October 27, 2025, we had a regular board meeting. Does everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes? Does anybody have any comments, questions, or a motion to approve?
Trustee Duke's motion to approve the board meeting from October 27.
Trustee Stanyek, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek.
Aye.
Trustee LuJai.
Aye.
Trustee Waincoop.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye.
So each November, Elk Grove Township recognizes veterans that live within the township, and it's my honor this evening to recognize four of those individuals. The first up is Captain Brian Gilligan. Captain Brian Gilligan honorably served 30 years in the U.S. Navy Reserve as an intelligence officer, advancing through a wide range of increasingly complex leadership roles. His career included key assignments as commanding officer and executive officer of intelligence units, as well as critical analytical and supervisory positions supporting U.S. and coalition forces. He deployed globally, he deployed globally in support of international security operations, including a 2013 mobilization in Kabul, Afghanistan, where he served as Chief of External Relations within the International Joint Command of the International Security Assistance Force. His exemplary service is reflected in prestigious awards such as Meritus Service Award, Defense Meritus Service Medal, sorry, Defense Meritus Service Medal, and Afghan Service Medal. Captain Gilligan balanced his military career with full-time civilian service, including roles as a college professor, Executive Director of the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission, Mount Prospect Library Trustee, and School Board District 59 Board Member. Please join me in welcoming Captain Brian Gilligan.
Yes, I would. Thank you very, thank you very much. So first of all, I was aware of this honors program going back to last year, and I think it's a great thing that the township does and the continued support for this program for veterans regardless of the affiliation with whatever branch of service, Navy rules though, but don't, hopefully I'm not insulting anyone over there. But the fact is that we really appreciate what the township has done. The other thing that I want to make mention of is I was a reservist for 30 years. So the deployments occurred, you know, when I had full-time job responsibilities. And I just want to compliment my employers at O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission where I was for several years, and currently at Morton College in Cicero. Most importantly, though, I want to recognize my family. So my wife Janice, who's sitting there in the back, our son Kyle, who couldn't make it here this evening. I don't know what I would have done without them. Kind of holding down the fort, making sure everything was running smoothly at home. Like I said, I had really strong support at my employers. I see Sharon Roberts in the back. We served together on the District 59 School Board, and she was great, particularly with my 2003 deployment to UK. And Sue Ellen's here. I see you, Sue Ellen, from District 59, so I've known her for a number of years. And it's people like Sue Ellen and Sharon who have been excellent, especially in the voluntary roles and supporting my service. So thank you very much for the honor. We really appreciate it.
And also wanted to introduce a couple people here that are supporting the veterans from Mount Prospect this evening. Lauren Motusak, who is the VFW 1337 Commander, and Dutch DeGroot, the 4th District Service Officer of the VFW. Next up is Dennis Hickey. Dennis Hickey was drafted into the U.S. Army in 1969 and deployed to Vietnam in early 1970, where he served as an infantry man with the 25th Infantry Division. During his tour, he earned several commendations, including the Bronze Star Medal, Air Medal, Army Commendation Medal, Combat Infantry Badge, and the Vietnam Service Medal. After completing his service, he worked full-time while earning a BA in Business Management with a minor in Economics from Benedictine University, a goal he achieved over 12 years. Dennis went on to retire as a supply chain manager after 25 years with Skoll Corporation in Northlake, while his wife Lois retired after 35 years of teaching in School District 59. They have been proud residents of Arlington Heights and Elk Grove Township since 1987. Dennis, would you please join me? So Dennis, I'm going to give you just a minute to say a few words. But what I wanted to mention is that, and so when Dennis came up here, I said, "Welcome home" to him, and I learned that from Greg Padavani, who's the Chair of the Arlington Heights Memorial Parade in the park, and a former trustee in Arlington Heights, and he's just a supporter of veterans everywhere. But that "welcome home" has always stuck with me when it comes to the Vietnam veterans, so welcome home.
I just want to thank the board and my family, of course, for all the support they've given me through good times and bad times. They're all here, and my neighbors are here also. And I appreciate all the support. And, you know, I'm a blue-collar kid from Chicago, and I didn't think I'd ever be drafted, but I was drafted, and probably the best thing that happened to me on the worst. So it made me grow up, and so here I am today. And looking forward to, by the way, I did volunteer at Read to Learn. I don't know if you're familiar with that program, Read to Learn, District 214. I've been doing that for 11 years now, and that helps me to connect with the folks that I need to connect with. And anyway, thanks again for this great honor.
Thank you very much. Township is a big supporter of District 214 in supporting their, their learning efforts. And so my next honoree is Raymond Hollick. Raymond Hollick served in the U.S. Coast Guard from 1969 to 1973, beginning with boot camp in Cape May, New Jersey. His early service included 10 months aboard the Cutter Valiant in Galveston, Texas, before attending electronics school on Governor's Island where he graduated first in his class. He went on to serve at the small boat station in Freeport, Texas, where he was responsible for maintaining all electronics on 30- and 40-foot boats, the Cutter Point Monroe, and the station's communication systems. Raymond attained the rank of E22, which is an E5, making him the third highest-ranking member of the station. After completing his Coast Guard service in 1973, he began a career at Hewlett-Packard, repairing scientific instruments well before the era of personal computers. At this time, join me in welcoming Raymond Hollick. Hi, Raymond. Say a few words?
I will say that the Coast Guard is the only service that is dedicated to saving lives. And in the process, I went through at least, at least 13 hurricanes in Texas. But the education I got in the Coast Guard electronics got me into a very, very good career lasting over 35 years. And it was, it was, it was good, very good.
Thank you for your service. I went through one hurricane, but I was on land, so I can only imagine what it must be like.
Well, with the Coast Guard, when you're on a ship and there's a hurricane coming in, you head for the "I." You never, never take it sideways. If you take a hurricane sideways, you're liable to sink. We did take one 50-degree roll, which is like that, and came back from it, so.
Our fourth honoree could not be with us this evening, and that's Thomas Benson. Thomas Benson enlisted in the U.S. Air Force at the age of 18, with his parents' permission, and served from 1966 to 1970 on active duty, followed by two years in the Reserve during the Vietnam War. After basic training at Lackland Air Force Base, he was assigned to the Strategic Air Command's 306th Bomb Wing at McVoy AFB, and later deployed with the unit to Anderson AFB Guam, providing ground support for B-52 bombing missions over north Vietnam. He subsequently completed technical training as an electric power line specialist at Shepard AFB, before returning to McCoy to serve in that role. Thomas's final duty station was the remote and frigid Shemmy AFB in Alaska's Altoonian Islands, where he was, where he supported Cold War monitoring operations of the Soviet Union. For more than five decades since his service, he has been an active member of the Edison Park American Legion Post 541, where he served as commander and currently serves as financial officer. While Thomas could not be here with us this evening, we will make sure that he receives his plaque in due time. And let's join together and support Thomas Benson. Thank you to all for your service, and thank you for being here this evening. As we move on in our agenda, and if you want to leave, because you were here for the presentations, feel free to do so. But at this time, I'd like to call in our assessor to give her monthly report. Connie? Okay, Connie?
Thank you. First of all, excuse me, frog. It's rather humbling to give a report after listening to those presentations. Now to the bad news. Obviously, our traffic has increased because the second installment tax bills finally were posted, and on November 15th, you will have until December 15th to pay your property tax bill to the Cook County Treasurer's Office. It has not only been questions about the lateness of the bill, we're getting lots of questions on the high amounts of the bill. We're also seeing dropped exemptions where our homeowners and our seniors did not get the appropriate exemptions applied to their tax bill. There have been, there's just a number of unprocessed certificates of error that have not been completed by the assessor's office. Probably on the, on the topic of the high bills, our biggest complaints have been from our District 57 taxpayers who saw the result of their referendum. The median increase in that bill was between $600 and $800. Merry Christmas. We were notified on Thursday, the 20th. Because of the late tax bills, and because people did not have the opportunity to really understand the impact of the high taxes that they are expected to pay, the Cook County Board of Review has decided that they are going to reopen an appeals period for the township. Now, we do not know when this will start, but we have been told end of December, maybe 1st of January. Now, the people that have already filed an appeal with the Board of Review, you're fine. As far as filing, I do have to tell you, though, because we have not received our results letters yet. I do have to tell you, though, because we have not received our results letters yet, that those results are going to be held in obeyance until they process any further appeals that come in for the township. So no date, no length of time has been given, but we will try and keep you posted on exactly what's going on. This is truly unprecedented. This has never happened in my 36 years, and that only speaks to the chaos that we've been going through with the County Assessor's Office. The other reason I think that this came about, and I think you should be aware of it, it's not only, you know, our residents that are angry, what was brought to the attention of the Board, the Cook County Board of Commissioners, was that the attorneys were furious because their appellantants had not been able to appeal knowledgeably on how high their taxes actually were. So, one thing I will conclude with is that if, in fact, the county, Cook County Assessor, does process the certificates of error, and if they do, in fact, send out an amended tax bill, by statute, that taxpayer should have 30 days. Now, I'm saying by statute. God only knows how they're going to treat it, but what I would like you to be aware of is if you get an amended tax bill, please check the due date on it to see if you have extra time. If that does not come a few days before the 15th of December, you really should pay that tax bill. Any questions? Yeah?
Trustee, one quick question. So you've mentioned in the past that it's advisable, depending on how people are going to do their taxes, to pay that before December 31st regardless, right? If they want to...
All right, first of all...
I realize that we're not in a form where you're giving tax advice, I just want to make sure that we're...
Bottom line is, if you have filed for certificates of error, the county is way behind. So the possibility of you getting an amended tax bill, I think, are fairly slim. So if you do not get that amended tax bill, my advice would be to pay it and wait for the Treasurer to give you a refund.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question as well. Trustee Stajniak, you have mentioned taxes going up because of the referendum District 57, correct?
Well, there were two referenda, Mount Prospect Park District and District 57. And I think what catches people unaware is we would love to see a high voter turnout. We would like to see a really strong participatory electorate, because that means that what you're feeling and what your circumstances are, are going to be reflected in that election. However, what we do see on a regular basis is the few making the decisions for the many. And that is why we've got people coming in, and they're very surprised about their tax bill, and we look at it, and we say, well, you're in District 57, did you vote?
I could have not asked for a better encouragement to go and I'll vote. Just going back to, so the District 57, the referendum that passed, this is for the School and the Park District, correct?
No, no, two separate.
This is two separate ones, okay. Thank you.
The other thing that I would remind people of is look at your second installment tax bill. My hat goes off to the Cook County Treasurer, Maria Pappas. She has provided some incredibly fine information on that bill, on which particular tax bodies went up and which actually went down. There were some that went down, hooray for them, you know, but there's a wealth of information. On the lower left, you're going to see whether your exemptions have been applied, and if you don't see them, you need to come see us.
Thank you, Connie. And next up is the Clerk. Sue Ellen?
We just had one for you this month. It was a duplicate, a corporate request. My report says it's in process, it is now completed. And we elected last month two new members to the Mental Health and Wellness Committee, Trustee Lou Jai and Community Member Keenly. We did have our first meeting, it went really well, we got a lot accomplished, and next we will be having interviews with the heads of some of the agencies that we give grant money to.
Fantastic. Thank you. And now it's time for my report. I'm going to try and get through it as quick as I can. It's been a long month, but a productive month. October 30th, I attended the District 214 and Family Action Network event featuring Dr. Mark Bracken, expert in emotional intelligence at Buffalo Grove High School. It was a great event, I had an opportunity to meet the doctor, and it was well-attended by many. On November 4th, I met with representatives from the Mount Prospect Fire Department at Oasis Mobile Home Park, and they were installing smoke detectors in many of the mobile homes that either had expired ones or didn't have them at all, and those smoke detectors were provided by Elk Grove Township. On November 6th, I participated in a strategic planning kickoff meeting to review logistics in preparation for the upcoming planning process, along with Administrator Manzo. The NIU team has begun scheduling virtual one-on-one interviews with Board members and the Financial Director. On December 17th, Township leadership staff and the Administrator will participate in in-person strategic planning workshop. Following that session, the Administrator and I will complete a joint interview with the Northern Illinois University facilitators. We look forward to the full Board workshop scheduled for January 15th here in this room at 6:00 PM, where goals and priorities will be established. This meeting is open to the public. On November 6th, I, along with Trustee Jason Winkup, attended the Kenneth Young Center Foundation Luncheon, it was their 50, 50th anniversary. It was a great opportunity to learn about the past of Kenneth Young, see where they're at right now, and hear a little bit about what they see in the future. On November 6th, I attended the Rolling Meadows Partners Meeting at Harper College, along with Director of Social Services Cory Dewey. This collaborative session included Rolling Meadows Human Services staff and representatives from agencies, including Representative Musman's office. And then, as I mentioned earlier, on November 10th through the 12th, attended the Township Officials of Illinois Conference. It was a great opportunity to learn about the townships overall. We do a little bit more when it comes to social services up here in the north, where the southern townships do a little bit more when it comes to road and bridge. We continue to be well-represented among committees and divisions, demonstrating leadership and commitment to service. November 15th, I attended the Thanksgiving Distribution Event, along with Senator Murphy, who joined us for the first portion of the event and presented the Township Food Pantry with a $500 donation. On November 17th, I attended the Mental Health and Wellness Committee meeting. As a former member, I felt it was important to welcome the newly-appointed members. The committee worked efficiently and reviewed all applications. The administrators reached out to several agencies with follow-up questions from the committee and to schedule presentations, and the next meeting is scheduled for December 2nd. On November 18th, I met with the Rolling Meadows Village Manager Rob Sabo and Director of Human Services Natalia Niaves to discuss ongoing community needs. While Elk Grove Township serves a small portion of Rolling Meadows, it is an area with vulnerable residents who often face limited access to resources. The discussion was positive and collaboration continues. On November 19th, I accompanied Social Service Director Cory Dewey and Facilities Manager Romero Reyes to the Village of Arlington Heights to pick up a food pantry donation. The Village of Arlington Heights ran a 10-day food drive across their entire village, and our food pantry was one of the recipients. Also, on November 20th, the Lions Club of Mount Prospect made a monetary donation of $1,000 to the food pantry, and I gladly accepted on behalf of the township. I attended the Elk Grove Rotary Luncheon with Township Administrator Manzo, where Elk Grove Township received a $5,000 donation for the food pantry. On November 21st, the Elk Grove Township Youth Services hosted the annual AP Student Government Day for Elk Grove High School students. This is the third year of the program, and feedback continues to be positive. 23 students attended. The program included an ongoing, an opening presentation with lunch, guided tours featuring staff-led program overviews, and a closing Q&amp;A session. It was an excellent opportunity to meet the young people who are thinking about either serving, you know, serving in a role in a government or running for an election. They had lots of questions for me, I told them all about the township, I told them about my experience in government, whether it be the village or the township. They had great questions, they took the tour, and when they came back, they had a few more questions. We all took a photo together, and they were on their way. And last but not least, on November 22nd, I attended the Krista's Victor Thanksgiving Dinner. It was amazing to see the amount of people that attended this Thanksgiving Dinner, and I recognized several faces from the township, people that received services from the township. This is a community event that Krista's Victor puts on each year, where they serve like 600 meals to the community, and it's set up in one of their big rooms, and there are just these huge, you know, 20-foot tables with all the chairs, and they had like a full Thanksgiving Dinner. Just being there, you could feel the sense of community, and you could just see the volunteers working as hard as they could to make sure that everybody got a Thanksgiving meal. Not everybody is fortunate as many to be able to celebrate Thanksgiving with their family every year, but this was a great opportunity for people who don't have that opportunity to still celebrate Thanksgiving with their community, and so I was pleased to be there. That wraps up my report. Can we get a motion to accept the reports?
I do have a quick question.
Sure.
Trustee Stajniak, I know Supervisor mentioned going to Krista's Victor. I live down the street from the church, have been there many times with family, absolutely, absolutely amazing Thanksgiving Dinner, when you do feel like family the minute you walk in, and we do live in a neighborhood that it's made out of beautiful compassionate neighbors. Supervisor, you have mentioned a relationship with Rolling Meadows, and I know we cover about 10% of Rolling Meadows within our township. Could you share what were the specific, if any, needs for the residents in Rolling Meadows?
Sure. We talked about their continued need for support when it comes to the food pantry. We talked about our extended hours at the food pantry. We also talked about the opportunity for people to use proxies at the food pantry. We talked about the food lockers. We talked about a lot of issues that were specific to Rolling Meadows, and talked about how we might be able to work together in the future.
Thank you. And a follow-up question, using proxies and using our food lockers, what are, if any, options for residents who do not feel safe, given the situation with federal agents, who do not feel safe going and utilizing our food pantry?
So, Rolling Meadows has a program where they work with Faith Feeds, who visits the apartment buildings where some people feel unsafe to leave their complexes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Can we get a motion to approve the elected officials' monthly reports?
Trustee Stajniak makes a motion to approve reports for Assessor, Clerk, and Supervisor reports.
Lou Jai seconds. Motion and a second, roll call?
Trustee Stajniak?
Aye.
Trustee Lou Jai?
Aye.
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee Winkup?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye.
Moving on in the agenda, under New Business, we have a Resolution 2025-17 with the dates that the township offices will be closed. The dates are consistent with prior years, just different dates. So has everybody had an opportunity to review the closing dates for the township building?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody have any comments or questions, or a motion to approve?
Trustee Lou Jai moves to approve Resolution 2025-17, office closing dates for 2026.
Trustee Duke, second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call?
Trustee Lou Jai?
Aye.
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee Stajniak?
Aye.
Trustee Winkup?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye.
Next up is Resolution 2025-18, which will give us a schedule of the 2026 regular Board meetings for Elk Grove Township Board of Trustees. The updated list for 2026 also includes our strategic planning session on January 15th, and on May 27th, which is a Wednesday, has an asterisk, because May 25th, which is the fourth Monday of the month, happens to fall on Memorial Day. Are there any comments, questions, or motions?
Trustee Winkup, I move to approve Resolution 2025-18, the regular Board meeting dates for 2026.
Trustee Stajniak, second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, roll call?
Trustee Winkup?
Aye.
Trustee Stajniak?
Aye.
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee Lou Jai?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye.
Moving on to the appointment of Forest View Fire Protection District Officers. The Forest View Fire Protection District is a special taxing district located entirely within Elk Grove Township. The district is made up of approximately 135 residential homes and falls within the unincorporated portion of the Village of Elk Grove. The district exists to ensure that residents have access to reliable fire protection and emergency response services. Although the district does not operate its own fire department, it has a longstanding intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Elk Grove for the provision of professional fire and emergency services. Under Illinois law, Elk Grove Township Board is the appointing authority for the Forest View Fire Protection District Board of Trustees. The Township Board must appoint or reappoint members to ensure the district remains legally constituted and able to carry out its statutory responsibilities, including contractual oversight and fiscal authority. At this time, the nomination for President is Lynn...
Serencioni.
Serencioni, as President, with a term ending November 27th, 2028. Are there any questions before we move to a motion?
So, real quick question. I know Arlington Heights, the Village of Arlington Heights has a fire department right by Arlington Heights Road in Algonquin?
Yes.
So is there any unincorporated territory that would be responded to by the Village of Arlington Heights, or is it 100% of the unincorporated goes through the Village of Elk Grove?
So the way it works is that, so Elk Grove Township, these are in Elk Grove Village, but unincorporated, and so the way it would work is that Elk Grove Village has the IGA, but there is an agreement between all the fire departments in the northwest suburbs that they provide mutual response. So in the event that it made more sense for the Village of Arlington Heights Fire Department to respond, they would be the ones dispatched, just like Mount Prospect or anywhere else. In the event that Elk Grove was busy or the fire was closer, we just have that mutual aid reciprocation between the municipalities.
It's good to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion to approve Lynn for President with a term ending November 27th, 2028?
Trustee Winkup, I move to approve Lynn Serencioni as President for the Forest View Fire Protection District.
Trustee Duke, second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, roll call?
Trustee Winkup?
Aye.
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee Lou Jai?
Aye.
Trustee Stajniak?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye.
Moving on to Resolution 2025-20, the appointment of the Treasurer, Lynn Heffley. Are you going to motion?
Trustee Duke's motion to approve appointment of Treasurer Lynn Heffley to Forest View Fire Protection District offices.
Trustee Stajniak, second.
Motion and a second, roll call?
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Stajniak.
Aye.
Trustee Lou Jai.
Aye.
Trustee Wincup.
Aye.
Trustee Scaletta.
Aye.
And Lynn is here, so congratulations.
Oh. Thank you, Lynn.
Any questions? It's great to have.
And the final resolution of 2025-21 is the appointment of Secretary Cynthia Pollan. Can I get a motion, please?
Trustee Lou Jai motions for Cynthia Pollan to be the Secretary of the Forest View Fire Protection District.
Trustee Wincup, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lou Jai.
Aye.
Trustee Wincup.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Stajniak.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye. Lynn, thank you for all of your efforts. I know that it's a little bit of a thankless job, but please accept our thanks for all that you do to take care of that district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, it is time for us to discuss the proposed ordinance 2025-03, the Town Fund General Assistance Levy for Fiscal Year 2027. So, just so we're clear, while it's called Fiscal Year 27, it begins April 1st and ends March 31st of 2027. So, that kind of throws you off of like, why are we levying money so far in advance? But it is called the Fiscal Year 27. It confuses me all the time, so I wanted to make sure that I shared my insight with you that it's not wrong, it's just confusing. So, has everybody had an opportunity to review the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. There's a 0% increase in the levy. Are there any comments or questions regarding the levy?
Yeah. Trustee Lou Jai, very quick comment, and just wanted to reiterate that this board worked very hard in consultation with the staff to ensure that there was a 0% increase in the levy from last year to this year, while also maintaining the wonderful services that our township provides. And I always like to say, one of our most important jobs is not just to decide the levy, but also to make sure that the money is managed in a fiscally responsible way, and we can certainly say that it has been, and this budget and this levy is reflecting in that with a 0% increase year-over-end.
All right. If there's no other questions, can I get a motion?
Trustee Lou Jai motions for the proposed ordinance 2025-03, Town Fund General Assistance Levy for the Fiscal Year 2027.
Trustee Duke, second.
Just to make sure that we're on the same page. Town Fund slash General Assistance Levy, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Lou Jai.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Stajniak.
Aye.
Trustee Wincup.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye. And now a discussion of the proposed ordinance 2025-04RD, which is the Road Department Levy. So, while we did, well, not we, while previously, the previous board did abolish the highway department, we still have unincorporated roads that we have to take care of, and so that's why we still continue to levy. We take care of the snow removal and the maintenance of those roads. Are there any comments or questions?
Trustee Stajniak, I have a quick question. I'm not afraid to ask clarifying questions, but I know this is important. When I took the oath to become a trustee, one of the things we were saying is that we want to make sure we do our absolute best job to be the best towards we can be for the taxpayers' dollars. So, my question is, are there any major projects for that levy for roads?
Yes. I will ask that Administrator Manzo be more specific, but I know that we have portions of roads that we are going to have to take care of. There is one that, one portion that is going to have to be completely removed and laid down again. We can only patch so much, but at some point, we're going to have to take care of it because it's creating problems with even just snow plowing, because it's not taken care of as well as we would like, but we're trying to get as much out of the life of that asphalt as possible, but I would anticipate that we're going to be looking at some bids next year.
So, that's actually spot on. We have a big section of actually Forest View, so Lynn's probably familiar. There's some buckling in the road, and it's just been getting worse and worse and kind of deteriorating year after year, and we heard from Public Works just after the first snowfall this year, that they're having a hard time kind of going around it at this point, so we may even be doing a little bit of patching now for a quick fix, and so it's very helpful to have those funds. Depending on if we have to go out for a bid or not, our engineers will put that plan together, and you may or may not see it, again, depending on the cost. If we need to go out and just do some easy repairs for the first, for the next couple of months, but next year, you will see a big resurfacing in that Forest View area. That entire road needs to get done.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Are there any other questions? Someone make a motion?
Trustee Duke's motion to approve the purported, proposed ordinance 2025-04RD, Road Department Levy, Fiscal Year 27.
Trustee Lou Jai, seconds. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Lou Jai.
Aye.
Trustee Stajniak.
Aye.
Trustee Wincup.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye. So, for the record, both levies are a 0% increase over last year. Are there any discussion or comments from trustees for the greater good?
Yes, Trustee Wincup. So, I want to build on something that Trustee Lou Jai said about the levy. We're not providing the same services, we're providing more, and that's due to the township staff. Supervisor went over the numbers earlier, and depending on the department, we're growing anywhere from 10% to like 20% in terms of services delivered, and a lot of that has to do with the volunteers and also just the efficient way that staff approach their work. So, I just want to recognize that this is really efficient, you know, way to deliver services. I also want to recognize that it's hard to be, hard to be poor anywhere, but if you're going to be poor, and that is the way that you're born or the environment you're born into, it's better to be poor in an environment where people care and where there's compassion and where there's such volunteerism. So, one of the better places in this state to live is Elk Grove Township, because the people show up for each other. We've seen that in the news a lot recently in different villages, but you know, when we think about the numbers that we generated here in the Thanksgiving food drive, we think about the number of volunteer hours that have been put in, in the food pantry, it just shows there's tremendous amount of compassion in this community and that the resources here are things that people give freely. So, there's two ways that everybody here supports. One is the, you know, the taxation part, which there's representation for, right? So, that's why we're here, that's why we do have referenda, so people can vote on these things, and that's the money that we give without really thinking about it, or when we think about it, we're not happy about it, even though we consented to it in some way, and that underwrites a lot of the programs we do here. But the volunteer hours are not cost-free. People gave that time. They could have been doing other things, but they gave that time to the community, and they gave freely of their resources to the community in order to do things that they themselves can't do, which is run out and buy a turkey for a neighbor because they don't know who needs that turkey. So, the folks here do, and so working together in partnership with the community has been, it just gives me a lot of gratitude to live in this place and to be associated with these folks that do this hard work and their staff. I think I wanted to make one other quick comment about the, about our recognition of the veterans this evening, especially Supervisor Scaletta, you know, welcoming home the Vietnam veterans. I just want to say that I think we appreciate the assessor saying that that was hard to follow, because that level of service is really significant, and this time of year, I always think about my father and the service that he did, and I think about how much he, when you take that oath and you commit to that service, you did not know all the things that came after, and I appreciated you recognizing this evening, the gift that it gave you in terms of vocationally, but the weight that you carry through for that service continues and persists far beyond your discharge. And so, I'm grateful to you for your service, grateful to the folks we recognize this evening, and grateful for those that we weren't able to recognize this evening but are in our community. They and their families bear costs that many of us wouldn't understand, and many of us serve in different ways, and there are many wonderful ways to serve, and so I'm just grateful for your service and for the others that we were able to recognize tonight, including for the service of one of our board members, Trustee Dukes. And so, thank you for your service and the commitment that you've made to protect our rights and our freedoms and the tax that you take on, not financially, but you know, for the efforts that you expend to keep this country free and great. So, thank you.
I would like to say a couple words on Veterans Day as well.
Trustee Dukes.
Thank you. So, when I think of Veterans Day, I think of everything that Jason just said, and I really appreciate the supervisor honoring the veterans this evening, but it's not just, I mean, to say, I mean, there is obviously the sacrifice that the service members are making, but there's also a sacrifice on the family. So, I'm thinking about the parents who see their teenage son or daughter go out without actually knowing how much they're going to be able to communicate with them in the future, and I'm thinking about the spouse who has to hold down the house for an extended period of time all by themselves, and I'm thinking about the children who are seeing their parents go off to deployment. So, when we, on our Veterans Day, it's not just the veterans, but it's also the veterans' families, because they're making a sacrifice that's also very great. And then with the, you know, we're seeing now a newer generation joining the military for a totally different set of reasons. We've heard from veterans here that were drafted, and there are other people who joined out of a zeal following 9/11, but a lot of, today, a high school graduate who joins will have been born in 2007. So, there, a lot of them are joining for a whole new set of reasons, such as education or travel, which is all great. Those are perks to take advantage of, but it's stories like, like the one you told today about being in a hurricane, or stories that we heard from, from the other veterans, those are really important to keep telling those stories, and it helps remind us about the shared heritage that's a little bit greater than, you know, than the little, than the GI Bill. You know, those are great things, but it's really important to hear those stories, and I encourage you to keep telling those stories, and it's really, it's really, it's really heartwarming to see the service of, you know, veterans' role and the VA and VFW, so thank you sincerely.
Trustee Lou Jai.
I would also just like to mention and make a final pitch for our Adult Angel Tree Program that we have going on until December 11th. Feel free at the township, or you can always write or call in, and they will hand you an ornament, or you can select an ornament that if you bring back by December 11th, will be given to a older adult, just to make the holidays a little brighter for them. A lot of them are items that they need. This township, as every trustee, every volunteer, every member, supervisor, and staff knows, is run by remarkable volunteers, and this community is really important, and so we always try and give back when we can, particularly during this holiday season. So, the Older Adult Angel Tree Program, thank you to the staff that are running it this year, there are a lot more ornaments on the tree to be picked up for this holiday season.
All right. And then I guess the final comment I'll make is that, you know, I'm grateful to the staff and also the administrator for working with me and putting together the levy. You know, the 0.0% increase was important to me. Specifically, you know, we're always talking about how we need more affordable housing, and while we do have affordable housing, what we don't have is affordable property taxes, and we're doing our part to make sure that we're making Elk Grove Township just a little bit more affordable with a 0% increase. So, I'm grateful to the board, I'm grateful to the staff, especially Administrator Manzo for her efforts in putting it together, and just want to wish everyone here and out in YouTube land a blessed Thanksgiving, and we will see you back here in December. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Trustee Duke's motion to adjourn.
Trustee Wincup, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.